Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, we do a roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
President.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here. Moving to item three, would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, let's stand. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Moving to item five, agenda items to be added, do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to revise the agenda as follows. Remove items seven G and seven H from the consent agenda. Add DSS appointment for Stanton River District, Robert Story, to the consent agenda. Remove item eight B. Add the following items under matters from work session. CIP plan approval as item thirteen A. Fire and EMS consulting study as item thirteen B. Fire and rescue service agreement as item thirteen C.
I thank you, Mr. Height, I have a motion of second.
I make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram, any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. Moving to item six, the approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ingram. Second, second by Mr. Height, any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item seven, our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'll approve the, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented to us. Now, you removed some things off of it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, all right, motion by Mr. Dudley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker, any other discussion?
I would like to discuss, on seven H, the, the DSS appointment, there's a, there's a vacancy coming up and I am reappointing a gentleman by the name of Robert Story. Comes from a good background, very strong minded guy, and he's gonna serve well there. So, just wanted to make the comment to just, just let you know, sir, thanks.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the public, if you're looking at the current agenda, this is gonna be the old agenda since they did just make revisions, so he's referring to seven H, which is now his DSS appointment for Stanton River District.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
I think.
Got the second.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving to presentations, I don't think we have any tonight, correct. Item nine, hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or land owner of the county or arrested agent of such resident or land owner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an autotonal voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body, not any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens should last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during said section, session, who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. McCluster?
Yes, sir. Nathan Black.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Black, we are the Black family, we live and farm in Halifax, Mecklenburg and Person Counties, though we own land in the Banister District of Pennsylvania. My sons and I have prepared this presentation for you tonight. Thirty years before Pennsylvania was established, my ancestor, Richard Lane, in seventeen forty-six, brought his family to settle in these rolling hills near what is today Alcorn Lake. He was soon followed by other of my ancestral families, the Brooks's, the Crawleys, the Wilsons and others. Also in the seventeen forties, my wife's ancestors, the Sheltons and the Terrys, settled near Mount area in Patensburg. When the colonists decided to throw off the tyrannical king and form a new nation, our people participated in the revolution. One of my ancestors, a resident of Pennsylvania County, Samuel Crowley, was killed. One of my wife's people was captured, placed on a British prisoner ship from which he escaped off the coast of Florida, and traveled by foot back to South Carolina, reenlisted there and served the remaining remainder of the war before returning home to Virginia. A few decades later, when the British once again made war on us, my ancestor, Patrick May, fought in the War of eighteen twelve. When Abraham Lincoln called on Virginia to provide him with troops for his planned invasion of South Carolina, Virginia said, "No way." And once again, our ancestors found themselves fighting in defense of the honor of Virginia. During the First World War, although the US was never officially at war, my great-grandfather volunteered and fought in France to defeat the Nazi ideals of socialism. Twenty-some years later, when the Allies were planning the D-Day invasion, because of his previous experience in France, he was called back into service, given the rank of Colonel, and led our men once again to defeat the socialist Nazi agenda. My wife's grandfather was career in the Navy, my brother served in both Iraq and Afghanistan campaigns, and my father-in-law served twenty-seven years in the Army, recently passed at the age of fifty-six, still employed as a consultant at Fort Bragg. Yes, I married an Army brat. Today, in Pennsylvania County, my wife and I are blessed to own a seven acre piece of land, a small portion of what her Terry kin settled on in the seventeen forties. My children have the great privilege of running and playing on the very soil their ancestors walked on some two-hundred-and-seventy-five years ago. I share this heritage with you because it is with this background that I found myself the other day reading all two-hundred-and-seventy-two pages of the proposed zoning ordinance changes, where to my astonishment, I discovered that if I choose to fly my Confederate flag or my neighbors' their Black Lives Matter or pride flags, or even the Christian flag flying in a churchyard, that we would be limited to a flag no larger than a three-by-five, which you see here. To say that governmental flags are unrestricted while imposing all other flags to a sixteen-square-foot standard is nothing less than discrimination based on content. Furthermore, I discovered that we will be limited to a maximum of three flags total. Now, I have one last flag to show you, indeed. It is larger, and not a flag at all. This is the size of a solar panel. A quick Google search informs me that the average solar farm contains approximately fifteen hundred panels per acre. Recently, on our road, a solar farm was approved on fifteen tracts of land. If I had chosen to include our seven acres in this solar project, we would have been allowed approximately ten thousand of these on our land. Instead, because we choose to keep our land in beautiful rural countryside, we will only be allowed this measly display of three flags. This is wrong. Our ancestors fought and died for this country to be free, and what better example of freedom than that a person be able to fly a flag in their own yard that represents who they are or aspire to be? I therefore ask you, if you have any respect for the people of Pennsylvania County, that you remove all restrictions on flag poles.
Sir, you're gonna have to wind it down, your time has expired.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That you, if you have any respect for the people of Pennsylvania County, that you remove all restrictions on flag poles and flag sizes in the proposed zoning ordinances, and affirm the right of the people to fly whatever flag they identify with and as large as they wish on their own private property. Thank you for your time, may God bless the people of Southside, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Casper.
Welcome, Mr. Casper.
I'm Alan Casper, and I proudly reside in the Banister District of Pennsylvania County. I just wanted to start tonight, just, I didn't write anything down, I'm just flying by the seat of my pants here, but I just wanted to congratulate all our new members of the board. I wanted to thank each and every one of you for your willingness to serve. I know it's not easy, and over the past forty-two years, I have volunteered as a firefighter or EMS provider in Pennsylvania County. So, I've dealt with a lot of boards, and I'm looking forward to this year because the gentlemen that I see sitting around this board, I know that while we may not always agree, I know I can work with each and every one of you. I know I can trust each and every one of you, and I thank you for that. This coming year, I know it's gonna be difficult, I know that we have some budget challenges, and you know, I understand where they come from, and as, having dealt with fire and rescue for as long as I have, I am acutely aware that even though that is a passion of mine, I realize that fire and rescue is not the only issue facing Pennsylvania County. I realize that everybody has their needs, everybody has their wants. I realize that, you know, our Sheriff's Department, our schools, we all have a job to do. Our volunteers here in Pennsylvania County, they save this county millions, because if we had to career staff what these volunteers do, it would be overwhelming to this county. And I just, just want people to keep that in mind, because I see the cost of things. I see fire trucks that three years ago were six-hundred thousand dollars, are now over a million for the same truck. I see ambulances passing half a million. I see equipment to equip a firefighter that just a few years ago, turnout gear that I could put a fireman in for twenty-five hundred dollars, now eight grand. And that's the problem that everybody's facing. It's, we're getting inflation across the board, so I know there are gonna be challenges in the coming year, but I know as we go forth in this coming year, that we can all work together, respect each other, and work for the betterment of Pennsylvania County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Robertson.
Welcome, sir.
My name is Wayne Robertson, I live in Ken Bowman's district. First off, I want to say congratulations to you all who have won your election this year. I know there are a lot of good candidates running, and it's, it's difficult for some to lose, I understand that. What you're doing is really, really important, so I appreciate what you're doing because it is so important. What I came to talk to you about was the proposed new jail that I hear about. I was reading about it on your website and heard people talking about it. I'm here to ask you to drop the whole thing. It sounds like an extremely expensive burden on the taxpayers of Pennsylvania County. First off, the current jail that we have, it probably needs some renovation and upgrades and that sort of thing. It's not gonna cost forty-nine million dollars to do that, and if we need some expansion, there's this Camp fifteen out here west of Chatham, that probably needs some upgrades and cleaning, but it's not gonna cost forty-nine million dollars. It's already set up for a jail, a prison. So, what we need to do is find another way to take care of those needs without burdening the taxpayers with a brand-new jail. There are lots of other things that I can talk to you about that. One last thing, I keep hearing that a judge has the authority to demand a new jail and a new courthouse, but I cannot find anybody who will tell me where a judge gets that authority. What I'm looking for is Code of Virginia, Supreme Court ruling, Constitution of Virginia statements, something that really gives the judge that authority without just saying, "Oh, the judge has that authority." So, I would like somebody to get in touch with me about that. I'll sum it up this way, it's time to stop this spending that we don't have, it's too much burden on the taxpayers. If you look at the world out there, the world is about ready to blow up, and now is not a time to burden the taxpayers with a new judge.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So, I appreciate you're paying attention to my, my statements. I have a letter that I have given to the lady over there to give all of y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wayne.
Ben Meeks.
Welcome, Mr. Meeks.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Meeks.
Welcome to the new year, I look forward, well, I'm sorry, I'm Ben Meeks from Greenwich Island's district, I should have started with that. Also, I'm a small business in this county, I've got eighty-six acres, raise animals on it, started my family here, have a daughter here, I've been volunteering in my community for fifteen years, chairman of the Fire and Rescue Commission, member of the association, proud to be a part of that. So, welcome to the new year, I look forward to a fresh breath of air this year with this board and what you bring. I would like to thank each one of you gentlemen for serving this great county. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of volunteer fire and rescue. The volunteers in this county save millions of dollars for the county each year. The agency I'm affiliated with, which is Greenwich Fire and Rescue, alone ran twenty-three-hundred calls for service this year. We received ninety-five thousand dollars from this county. Our budget expense was just over six-hundred thousand dollars. So, the county supported fifteen-point-eight percent of our overall budget for fire and rescue in the Greenwich community and district. There's twenty-one fire and EMS districts, just so for information. You do the simple math, without the volunteers, you would need to find millions of extra dollars to put in the budget in order to meet the need of the public, and those numbers continue to rise, gentlemen, all right? Fire trucks now are over a million dollars, as Mr. Casper said a little while ago, bought a fire truck three years ago for six-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. The same truck today is over a million dollars, all right? Ambulances, with a stretcher now, it's going over five-hundred thousand dollars, I think Tunstall's in the process now, that's Beck and One, you can talk to Troy Tally, he's the chief there, he can tell you all about it. A Lucas CPR machine to do adequate CPR on a patient when they go down, twenty-one thousand dollars, and let's not even talk about the insurance on it, or the, the, to get it serviced each year, the service agreement on that each year. If you need to go on a house fire, you need gloves, pants, a coat, a helmet, a nomex and an air pack, just those six items is eight thousand dollars or more. We are operating in hard times, guys, with this economy, just like we know all the issues you guys are facing across this county and across this country. We understand that, but we're asking for your assistance as much as you can give towards us, we look forward to this upcoming year and working with you guys. And I just ask that if you can, to try to, to give us the resources we desperately need, invite you all to attend our Fire Commission meeting this Thursday, it's at six-thirty, be here in this board room, we would love to have you all come, even speak.
Thirty seconds remaining.
We'd love to see you, we'd love to see you guys there, show support for us and what we're trying to say, and we look forward to, to working with you guys. I'd like to thank all of y'all again for serving, and thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Scares.
Welcome, Mr. Scares.
Good evening, my name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. Tonight, I would like to start off by mentioning a Facebook post that was posted before the November election by the niece of the Tunstall supervisor. She stated in her, in her post that her uncle should not be reelected to this board, and then if he was, the circus would continue. Fast forward to last week, and you will see that the circus has indeed continued courtesy of the Tunstall supervisor. His attempts to coerce and conspire with two fellow board members to remove three sitting members in good standing of the DSS board is nothing less than disgraceful. This was not because of any wrongdoing, but simply because they supported his opponent in the past election. Thankfully, one of the board members who was approached refused to participate in this unethical scheme. The second one came to his senses after pressure from his constituents, and he too decided not to help the supervisor, Tunstall supervisor, in this vindictive act of retribution. This is the same type of unethical behavior the Tunstall supervisor was censured on in October of twenty nineteen. There were eight counts that he was censured on. It appears the supervisor has no problem with unethical behavior. Last month, I reported on his Facebook post, where he talked about authorizing the Lynchburg Commonwealth attorney to do an investigation on himself to clear his good name and prove his innocence on the counts he was censured for in two thousand, two thousand nineteen. In reality, this investigation had nothing to do with clearing his good name, that was a lie. In truth, it was authorizing four county employees to be investigated on trumped-up charges of illegal activities. Thankfully, the Commonwealth attorney ruled nothing illegal had been done, and refused to bring any charges against these employees. Going forward, I would suggest that this board keep a close watch on the Tunstall supervisor's actions, as he has proven that he cannot be trusted. Lastly, it has been brought to my attention that seven of the fire and rescue agencies missed the deadline for filing their twenty-twenty-two year-end nine-ninety reports. In addition to that, only three of the fire and resc, fire and rescue agencies have met their year-end commitment to submit their financial compliance letters to this board in order to qualify for county taxpayer funding. When you have a member of this board that sits on the Fire and Rescue Commission, who has promised an additional million dollars in taxpayer funding for these agencies in next year's budget, I would suggest this board would take these issues into consideration before idly approving that funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scares.
Thank you, Ms. Scares.
Mike Neal.
I'll take care of it. Yeah, I'll get it, yeah, I'll get it.
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Neal.
I'll get this thing right, Alan was a little bit short, I think he pulled it down. Okay, my name is Mike Neal, most of you know me, I guess, I'm from the Dan River District, I've been a volunteer firefighter, rescue for this county for fifty-five years. Wow. I was driving a fire truck at sixteen. Recently, I just turned seventy, so y'all figure it out. Old knees getting tough, back's getting tough, and fighting the political world in the last two or three years up here's been tough for a lot of people, and, and then I had a death for my daughter about a year ago, thirty-eight years old, and it took a chunk out of us, so this will be my last year as fire chief for Ringo Fire and Rescue. I'm beginning my thirty-fourth year this year, been assistant chief eighteen years before that, which totaled fifty-two years, so it's been a lot of sad times, a lot of hard pill to swallow, but we've had good times, and when you save people's life, put your house out, pull somebody out of a burning car, and you can save somebody with CPR, it's all worth it, okay? And not just me, but we've got six-hundred-and-forty-eight of us do this. So, we still hear a little flack on, on supporting fire and rescue, I can promise you, you can go to any community in this county, any community in this county, they will fight you over a fire and rescue squad. I'm talking about from forty years ago, fifty years ago, we started in fifty-eight. And I'm talking about from forty years ago, fifty years ago, we started in fifty-eight. You've got the mom and pop stores, you've got the tobacco farmers, you've got these people that gave their heart, soul, and blood for fire and rescue. Nowadays, everybody's going, they're working two jobs, they're working twelve-hour shifts, they're working out of town, uh, you know, and the volunteers are not out there no more, trust me. I just told you, I've been doing this fifty-five years, I know. I mean, we begging people to get them, and you get them, you can't keep them. We have to do a stipend-type pay for, for EMS to keep people to station. And, and just like they mentioned before, ma'am, we ain't talking about a million and two dollars. You probably talking fifty million dollars to, to go in and just put a minimum people in these stations, I'm telling you. And, and Allen mentioned a fire truck. I got four of my guys right now in Wisconsin. They having a good time, thirty below zero, twelve inches snow on the ground, and the temperature was two today, but they flying home hopefully tomorrow. We just ordered a seven-hundred-some-thousand-dollar truck. It took over two years, ordered this truck January the twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-one. Okay? And it's taken that long just to get it. They mentioned rescue squads, you know. The county runs sixteen-and-a-half-thousand calls last year, sixteen-and-a-half-thousand
At the end of the day, I mean, you know, we can't all make it with us and public safety.
You go around, you check Dambol, you check Dambol Life Saving Crew. I got guys working Lynchburg Fire, South Boston Fire. Go around, they can't keep the complement of people to keep the staffing going. That's how bad it's got. So we've got a good bunch here, we've talked to a lot of y'all, and I'm sure we'll have y'all's support. And I'd just like to mention Mike Taylor in the Sheriff's Department, nine-ten Deputy Short.
Three minutes is complete.
School resource officers, okay? School resource officers. As far as I know, last time I talked to Mike, we got three schools in this county that don't have them. They've bounced back and forth, but we don't have them, okay? So we need to look ahead and fill that bunch in and get that out of the way instead of standing up here one day, waiting, going forward, what are we gonna do after this happened? Let's pro-act and make sure it don't happen. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Vanessa Scares?
Welcome, Ms. Scares.
Hey, Ms. Vanessa.
Thank you. My name is Vanessa Scares, and I live in the Westover District. Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome to all the new board members. I hope that each of you have taken some time to study every document that explains your duties and sheds light on your responsibilities as a board member. I've been praying for each of you that you will have discernment. The biblical meaning of discernment is the ability to choose between what is true and right and what is false and wrong. I believe 2024 will be a pivotal year for our county, state, country, and the world. I also believe that America will be saved based on the covenant that was formed between God and our founding fathers. America is still the best nation on this planet. In case you have not heard, a documentary will be released next month by Rob Reiner. It's called God and Country. The title would make everyone want to go see it, right? In reality, the purpose of this documentary is to make Christians out to be extremists. It's about the rise of Christian nationalism. But my question is, how can Christian nationalism rise in a country that was founded as a Christian nation? This is just another method to confuse people. Raise your hand if you remember when being considered a patriot was a good thing. Now, even in America, being a patriot is considered a bad thing by many. It's time for us to wake up and realize that we are not in a political war as much as we are in a spiritual war. We are in a good versus evil era, and we need to be thinking for ourselves individually how we define freedom. Isaiah chapter ten, verse one states, "Woe to those who make unjust laws and to those who issue oppressive decrees." So with that in mind, and since January is Sanctity of Life, of Human Life Month, I would like to ask everyone in this room to contact your member of the House of Representatives, which is probably Eric Phillips or Danny Marshall, and your state senator, who is probably Tammy Mulkey, and ask them to vote against HJ-1 and SJ-1. Let them know that we do not want Virginia to become another Ohio. In Virginia, we do not want the right to unrestricted late-term abortions on demand in our state constitution.
Thirty seconds remaining.
These resolutions are deceptive in their language by using the term reproductive freedom, which is the code word for abortion. Please take time tomorrow to reach out to your representatives regarding this matter. In the meantime, there has been a life-at-conception bill filed, and we need to support that. It was filed by delegate Tim Griffin of the Fifty-third District. So please keep that matter in your prayers. We need to get back to the old roots of America, the roots that we were founded on.
Three minutes is complete.
So just call me old-fashioned, and I'll say thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Moving to item ten of public hearings. R zoning public hearings, pursuant to Article five, Division six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear, decide specific zoning issues and rezoning map changes in, in support of the said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all decisions and regulations are directed to these goals that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Moving to first case, R dash twenty-three dash zero seventeen, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-three dash zero-one-seven, Darrell and Gwendolyn Avery have petitioned to rezone one-point-eight-zero acres located on State Road seven-thirty-two, Little Creek Road, in the Dan River Election District from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General to allow for a daycare facility. Once the property is rezoned to B-2, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash three-six-five are permitted. On December fifth, twenty-twenty-three, the Planning Commission recommended by six-to, six-to-zero vote with opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff some reason closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Gwendolyn Avery is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At seven-thirty-two PM, open the public hearing in case R dash twenty-three dash zero seventeen. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. At seven-thirty-two PM, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Height, the pleasure is yours, sir.
In case R twenty-three dash zero seventeen, make a motion denying the rezoning of one-point-eight acres from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to B-2 Business District General.
Um, was, was that denied? Is that what you said?
Yes.
We got a motion by Mr. Height, second. Second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion?
Um, yes, let me, let me ask Emily the question on this denial. What, what was the Planning Commission's?
The Planning Commission asked if the applicants would make proffers eliminating commercial uses, which the applicants have not offered those proffers at this time. They stated they would at Planning Commission, but they have not. Those proffers would have addressed the opposition that Planning Commission heard, and that is why Planning Commission recommended approval. We have not received those proffers.
Okay, from the Planning Commission meeting till today, correct?
Correct. And at this time, you all have closed the public hearing, so they cannot present proffers to you at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
No, sir, we have closed the public hearing. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Let me ask Ms. Ragsdale there. So if this is denied, then how long does the applicant have to wait before he can reapply?
Twelve months.
To bring proffers and everything, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, um, you all could table this case if you would like to give the applicant more time to, you know, try to come up with some proffers or to offer proffers. They have to be offered voluntarily.
Um, I think Mr. --
Mr. Chairman. One option for them may be, our zoning code allows an individual to withdraw a case without penalty.
Without penalty, yes.
And what that means is, they get a do-over, but they can bring it back inside that twelve months. If you act tonight and you deny it, they cannot bring back a similar case to this board for a twelve-month period. So I think probably, if it's acceptable to them, their best bet would be to withdraw without penalty. They'd go back to the drawing board, meet with the neighbors, maybe meet with staff, sign some proffers, get some proffers that takes away some of these friction points. And then when all that's buttoned up, they'd come back to Emily, and we redo this whole process.
Will it, will it be a cost associated with this, or just resubmit?
They would have to pay the --
They'll have to pay their advertising fee again, but that's minor in the whole scheme of things.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Chairman, in that same vein, I'm gonna ask my colleague, Mr. Height, to withdraw that motion so that we can insert a motion to postpone.
It's withdraw without penalty is the term of order.
Well, I would, I would ask the applicant if they are acceptable to that, and if they are willing to withdraw their application, because they have to be the ones to ask for that to be withdrawn. Otherwise, you would just table it, if you would like to give them additional, additional time.
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hunt, since we have closed out the comments, can we reopen this to the gentleman now?
You can reopen it.
Okay.
And it's also, they are, these individuals are the applicants, is that correct?
Yes.
So, so they should have been given opportunity to speak anyway. I think they just didn't stand up at the right time.
They just stepped up.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Um.
All right, at seven-thirty-seven PM, I'll reopen the public hearing in this case. If you got applicants that are here, step up and share your wishes, please.
Gwendolyn Avery, yes. Thank you all for coming.
Good, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Well, good afternoon, happy new year to everyone.
Thank you.
Um, when we spoke with Emily the other day, she gave us a paper right here saying that if we didn't sign this paper, we would get approved. And it was stating that, uh, if we wanted to do anything else other than daycare center, that we had to do everything our own. And to us, that, that didn't, didn't sound right. So we said we'll just go on faith of God. And, um, that's the reason why we didn't sign this paper right here that she typed up, stating that, uh, you want to do.
It says that.
Step up to the mic, ma'am, please.
It says that I will not use one-point-eight acres partially for any permit used listed by right under section thirty-five, three-sixty-five, that are not solely related to childcare, daycare center, and any other than stated will require a new petition with a public hearing and approved by the Board of Supervisors. Should the childcare center ever be dissolved, I shall petition the Board of Supervisors to rezone the property back to RC-1 Residential Combined Subd, Subdistrict. So guess what we was, what we was thinking was, if we, if y'all had allowed us to do, if we had signed this paper, and that's saying that we can't do anything else other than childcare center. So my thing is, if we're gonna build a major center, and just say, say for instance, if something happens in the center that you have to close down for maybe a year or two or whatever, if we wanted to use it as maybe a reading center, that's saying that we can't use it as any other, anything else but a childcare center, so either bringing the other, the other resources to help pay for that building. So that's why I didn't want to sign it, because it's saying that's all I can use it for is a childcare center. I didn't think that that was right, that maybe we should be able to use it for something else besides the childcare center, just in case if that fell through.
Which we have a list of multiple, uh, uh, jobs that can be used and, and solely, this, we looking at this building solely for a daycare center. She kept daycare in our home for twenty-three years. And that's all we looking at doing with that business. But if we gonna build a seven, eight-hundred-thousand house building, don't none of us know the future, no? And.
If that daycare closed down, we can't use it for anything else. It's just sitting there, but it has to be paid for. So we don't want to sign this and, and giving us a limited, what we can do with that building. That's why we didn't sign it.
Because Mr., thank you, Mr. Hunt, last time told me to look at, um, one of our neighbors was supposed to be over half a mile from us. The only one she knew I used to work at Woodard worked so, uh, sixteen years, so her family bought vehicles, and we friends. And she said, well, I don't mind them doing a daycare center, but I don't know what a car like that, where that come from, I don't know. But she's not our neighbor, she over half a mile. And, um, we wanted to go talk to her, but I was, was kind of scared to go talk to her because we friends. And, you know, we felt that she could have came to our house if we go into her house, you know, and fast, uh, that didn't happen, but anyway.
But all, but all of this money you're saying that you could do with it, um, with the zoning, and if we sign this, then we can't do anything else. And we don't want that to happen, that we can do anything else. I mean, if anything we're gonna do, it's gonna be pertaining to children. It may not be a daycare center, it could be a reading center, because some of the kids need reading. So it's something, you know, I don't want to sign anything that's gonna lock me down for doing anything else, and I have a big building sitting here. That's, that's our discussion.
We, we looking to enhance this, yeah. We know that daycare is needed because people still calling her, and on many of my, she shut that down because two thousand nineteen, I came down with camera, and they wanted me to retire, and we couldn't afford, uh, with multiple alone, to have people coming in and all of our own. So that's why she had to shut it down, and people regular, uh, asking for it now, we been dealing with Kentucky, Alabama, school system, and.
Factory.
They, they ain't have a, you know, uh, what is the, uh, it's, I'm saying.
For not school kids. And I've served, I've already served over a hundred, um, children in, in the twenty-three years. Like I said, to this day, they're still calling me. Every day I get calls for childcare, wanting me to reopen. So that's why we didn't sign.
There's no, there's no daycare center anywhere, just like.
In that area, in the Ringo area.
We got big companies like Tyson here, they need, they need.
Yes, water organs, a lot of them. Thank you all for your time.
Yes, thank y'all for your time.
Have a blessed day.
You too.
Can I ask?
Mr. Height, go ahead, I'm sorry. Do you have a question for ma'am?
Well.
No, this is for Vaden Hunt.
Oh, for Vaden, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hunt? Yes, sir. Could this be tabled till next month, so I, as a district supervisor, can be educated more on this matter?
Uh, yes, I mean, there's. There's no requirement that you act on this night. If you want to. Table's the wrong word, it's postpone.
Yes.
Definitely, so postpone to the February meeting. Emily, you don't see any issues with that, do you? Okay, I think that's a good solution. And in this month, you, me, staff, we can work with them and try to find a solution.
Yeah, that's good.
So we, we just need a motion and a second and discussion to that effect.
Mr. Hunt, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order, Mr. Height needs to re, withdraw his initial motion, please, and then we can move forward.
Yes, correct. You withdraw, Mr. Height, okay. All right. Do we need to close, let me close this public hearing back out. Uh, at seven forty-three, public hearing is closed, and now I'll entertain another motion from Mr. Height.
Make a motion that we postpone a decision on this till our next meeting.
To the February meeting, okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Tucker? Second by Mr. Tucker, any more discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Um, Kalen, on that motion, this is a motion to deny, but is, is that actually gonna be upgraded to?
Yes, I've got postpone on mine. It may not reflect on yours, but that'll be correct in the minute, yes.
How about yours?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Height.
Thank you, sir. All right, motion carries unanimous to bring it back next month's meeting. Moving to case R dash twenty-three dash zero thirty, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash twenty-three dash zero-three-zero, James Hubbard has petitioned to rezone three acres located on Grit Road and Stone Mill. on Grit Road and Stone Mill Road in the Dan River election, election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General to allow for a public garage. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under section 35 dash 365 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman James Hubbard is here to represent the petition.
Miss, Miss, Miss Ragsdale, did you say Dan River when you were speaking just then?
I did, I'm sorry, Stan River.
Yes, ma'am, okay, let's, I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can't be two of us.
All right, at 7:45 PM, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 030. Ms. McLaughlin, have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. At 7:46 PM, I close the public hearing, and the pleasure is yours, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, um, Ms. Chairman, and, and thank you. In case R dash 23 dash 030, make a motion approving the rezoning 3.0 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General to allow a public garage to be operated on that property. And that is my motion in form.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Height, any discussion on the motion?
I, I will say this, um, during the planning commission, Nathan Harker, I think, stepped down with this because he had had some business dealings previously. Uh, so gentlemen, you will see a six to O vote on that approving it, and that's the reason for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Hearing any, any more discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries unanimous, being rezoned, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
In case R twen- dash 23 dash 032, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash 23 dash 032, Donald Larry and Wesley Clay have petitioned to rezone 14.26 acres located on Blue Ridge Drive in the Callens Grattan Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to subdivide the property for family. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35 dash 178 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, the Clays are here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:48 PM, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 032. Anyone signed up, Ms. McLaughlin?
No, sir, not unless the applicants want to speak.
Okay, anybody here to speak towards this case before I close it out?
Yeah, let, here they are, this is the folks.
Welcome.
Good evening.
I'm Jared Pierce.
Michaela Pierce.
Yeah, you're welcome. And, uh, we're representing for Ralph, Donald, and Larry Clay, and we just wanted to move closer to our parents. We're, uh, that's what the, uh, that's what the, uh, rezoning is for. They were gonna gift us a little bit of land to move closer to them, so that's all we have.
All right, thank y'all.
Very good, thank you guys.
Appreciate that. All right, at 7:49 PM, I close the public hearing. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir.
Did you make the motion, please?
Um, Ms. Chairman, this is in Mr. Dalton's, um, for the public's interest. This is in his district. As being chairman, um, he generally asks somebody else to take his case until it's controversial, and when it's controversial, you can have it back. But in this case, um, in case, hang on, in case R dash 23 dash 032, I, I make a motion to approve the 14.26 acres from R1 Residential, um, to A1 Agriculture District to allow the property to be subdivided. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries unanimous.
Very good.
Property is being rezoned, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving to case R dash 23 dash 033, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash 23 dash 033, William Nick has petitioned to rezone 4.516 acres located on Walnut Creek Lane in the Westover Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel of land zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35 dash 178 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff some reason closing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that Mr. Nick is here, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Thank you. All right, at 7:51 PM, open the case in R dash 23, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 033. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:51 PM, I close the public hearing. The pleasure is yours, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. In, in case, are you blocking me? Yeah, I know. You unblocking my mic, can you see it?
You can hit your, if you're approving it, hit your yes and then save it, and then you'll see it. That's what I had last time on the problem.
Thank you. In case R two, dash 23 dash 3s, dash 033, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 4.516 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision to A1 Agricultural District to allow property lines to be adjusted.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous, property is being rezoned. Moving to case R dash 23 dash 034, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash 23 dash 034, Dwight Jefferson has petitioned to rezone 1.009 acres located on the corner of Northwest Drive and North Main Street in the Callens Grattan Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General to combine the property with an adjacent parcel of land zoned B2. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under section 35 dash 365 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jefferson is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:53 PM, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 034. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir, not unless Mr. Jefferson would like to.
Mr. Jefferson, do you have anything else you want to say to add to this case?
Is he here?
He was here earlier, there.
Okay.
No, sir, you fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, at 7:54 PM, I close the public hearing. Mr. Dudley, would you make the motion, please?
I like that when you stood up and said, not unless I need to, that's pretty cool. In case R dash 23 dash 034, I make a motion approving the rezoning 1.009 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General to allow property lines to be adjusted, and that is my motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Dudley, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries unanimous, property is being rezoned, Mr. Jefferson. Moving to case R dash 23 dash 036, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash 23 dash 036, Clarence and Robin Emerson have petitioned to rezone 6.17 acres located, um, on State Road 41 Franklin Turnpike in the Chatham Blairs Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a wayside stand. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35 dash 178 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Mr. and Mrs. Emerson are here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:56 PM, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 036. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Or is it anyone here that would like to speak towards it? If not, at 7:56 PM, I close the public hearing. The pleasure is yours, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to make a motion in case R dash three, uh, 23 dash 036, approving the rezoning of 6.17 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow a wayside stand to be operated on the property, and better known as the veggie shack.
All right. Thank you, sir. Got a motion, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion?
Chairman, for what it's worth, uh, is the spelling of the last name correct? How do you guys spell Emerson? Should be an S.
It should be an S. I think it's correct and everything else is a S.
Okay.
Okay.
Replace the Z with an S. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Yes, sir. We need a drop down.
Mr. Height, his is not coming up.
Yeah, I don't.
He don't have a screen?
Yours coming up?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't already vote.
Mine.
Yours, Mr. Dudley?
Mine is not.
All right, Mr. Dudley, can I get your vote verbally?
It would be yes.
Thank you, and Mr. Height?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimous, it's being rezoned, thank you. Moving to case R dash 23 dash 037, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash 23 dash 037, Timothy Walkendorfer has petitioned to rezone 1.392 acres, um, which is two parcels located on State Road 740 Iris Lane in the Westover Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to RMF Residential Multi-Family District to allow for duplexes to be constructed on the properties. Once the properties are rezoned to RMF, all uses listed under section 35 dash 280 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Timothy Wa- Walkendorfer is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:59 PM, open the public hearing for case R dash 23 dash 037. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Anybody, anybody from the applicant would like to speak? All right, if not, at 7:59 PM, we'll close the public hearing, and the pleasure is Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. In case R 23 dash 037, I make a motion to approving the rezoning of two parcels totaling 1.39 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to RMF, um, Residential Multi, um, Family District to allow duplex to be constructed on the property.
I'll second his motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous, being rezoned, thank you all. Moving to case R dash 23 dash 038, Ms. Ragsdale.
That's my last one.
You the popular lady tonight.
You, you earning your keep tonight, eh?
You a popular.
High exercise.
Eight cases, go ahead.
Case R dash 23 dash 038, Moore Smith has petitioned to rezone 7.598, five, 595 acres located on State Road 823 Concord Road in the Van Stor Election District from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be subdivided. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under section 35 dash 178 are permitted. On December 5th, 2023, the planning commission recommended by a six to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff some reason closing the board packet, Mr. Chairman, um, I believe Mr. Moore Smith is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 8:01 PM, open the public hearing in case R dash 23 dash 038. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Does the applicant like to add anything to it while the public hearing is open? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At 8:01 PM, we close the public hearing. The pleasure is Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash 23 038, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 7.595 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow the property to be subdivided.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Tucker, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous, it's being rezoned, thank you. Moving to item 11, do we have any unfinished business, Mr.?
No, sir.
Uh, item 12, our new business?
No, sir.
Okay, we have some items from the, uh, matters from the work session?
Yes, we just have three items.
All right, 13A, I think?
Mr. Chairman.
That's gonna be, yeah, 13A, the CIP Plan Approval.
Yes. Mr. Tucker. As, um, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, we had a wonderful workshop today, so I'm gonna make a motion approving the CIP as discussed in today's budget workshop, noting that the CIP is only a budgetary tool and is subject to change and prioritization.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, got a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Height, any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Moving to third, yes, sir.
Very quickly, for the, for the viewers online and for the people in the room, the CIP is your capital improvement plans.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we throw these acronyms around and we assume people understand and know what we're talking about, but, um, I, I think it was necessary that we share that. Okay?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Moving to 13B, another item from our work session.
That is the fire and EMS consulting study.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have this one.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
I make a motion authorizing county staff to hire a consultant to conduct a comprehensive study of the county's paid and volunteer fire and rescue system. Any hiring of said consultant shall be in compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, entertain a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to make a comment on that.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
Uh, this is going to come to us by way of a, of a grant, so it will not cost the county anything, and hopefully will put to rest some of the constant attacks and bickering over the difference between public safety and our wonderful volunteers. And so, once we receive this, uh, study back, we can accept it or reject it, but it's coming from a very, uh, well-established national corp, uh, company, and. from a very well-established national company, and I look forward to seeing the results. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any more discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimous, thank you. Moving to item thirteen C for my work session.
And that is the Fire and Rescue Service Agreement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to revise the annual Volunteer Fire and EMS Department Service Memorandum of Agreement by removing section eight C. Said revision shall be retroactively effective as of July one, twenty twenty-three. Any agency that has expended funds to conduct an audit for final, financial year twenty-four shall be reimbursed up to three thousand dollars, provided the agency provides sufficient documentation to county finance evidencing expenditure for said audit.
Thank you, Mr. Height. You got a second? Second by Mr. Whittle. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think Chris Key is here this evening. How many did you say audits have come through at this point? I'm sorry, is it four? Okay, any in the docket being worked on that you know of? Okay, and they're in the process? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Key.
Any more discussion or comment on the motion?
I did want to add to that.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Ingram.
Thankfully, this, uh, this issue has been put to rest by this new board. We are so highly appreciative and respectful of our volunteers, over six hundred men and women that serve us on a continual sacrificial basis, and to question their integrity, or the integrity of the command staff, or the integrity of their board of directors, how that ever got started is beyond me. But as of today, the audits are no longer, unless there's a need for that, and then you could look at the appropriate authorities like the state police if an investigation needs to be done. But it's also retroactive, so the departments going backwards don't have to worry about it. So, you know, I think probably the best way of saying it, from this board to our volunteers, thank you for your service, and this board will not harass you anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any more discussion? Not hearing any, then we're ready to vote, gentlemen. All right, motion carries unanimous. Moving to item fourteen, our board members' reports. Mr. Height, I'll start with you down there, sir. You got anything you'd like to say?
I would like to thank staff for working with me to get me adjusted to the technological disadvantages that I am at, and I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And as like Vic said, I'd like to thank our fire and rescue volunteers, because without them, we would be in a world of hurt in this county. So, we want to commend you for your service to the county and look forward to working with you, and I just look forward to a great, great year this year with this board.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It's been an extremely long day. I was just going to say thanks to everyone and move on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for allowing us to have a privilege to serve the people that we're looking at right now. That's who we're serving, and if there's anything that we can help you with, don't be afraid to ask, but just, just want to thank the folks for coming out, being concerned enough to just see what's going on in the county. Thank the staff. They work very, very hard and make it go much smoother than if we had tried ourself. So, I just want to thank everybody for that, and I'll pass that back. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Whittle?
I'll be.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Ms. Chairman, thank you. I've got three pages here, so if they will give me their...
You better talk fast.
If they'll give me their time, then I'll be glad to go over these. Well, first, I do.
Talk to AV to cut his mic.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to thank everybody for just being here tonight. This has been a great meeting today, like Mr. Tucker said and the board. We have, we've worked together. I had no doubt we could work together and, and come to agreement on a number of things. We've got some great ideas going into the budget this year, but let me, let me go back just for a couple of minutes, or a couple of seconds, and give you just a real quick, I want to give a shout out to Diana McFarlane, who is our public affairs lady. She has, she did the inaugural Pennsylvania County Citizens Academy, which I think where about eighteen people attended that. It was a four-week academy, and it was held over the community center. A fabulous job, and if you get a chance, she's going to do another one. Sign up for that, because you get to interact with all of our department heads and how the process works for a project coming into the county and what they have to do in order to make it happen, from start to finish. You'll learn a lot, and I would encourage the board members that if they haven't participated in something like that, it's also a good opportunity for you to talk to department heads and find out what they do behind the scenes and how they make things work. Also, I did a podcast, which I think all of our new folks did, Murray and Eddie, we did podcasts, so please go check those out. All of us have attended a number of ribbon cuttings, specifically the one at the Cyber Park. I know you probably saw it, it was a cold day. The Hughes Home, we just did that on Route Forty-One. Trey Belcher Training, I went to that, and a place called The Lounge Space, which is down on Forty-One. We participated, of course, in the Danville Chatham Christmas Parade, swearing-in ceremony for Mike Taylor. A lot of us attended the Commonwealth Prayer Breakfast in Richmond this past week, which was an outstanding event. We got to see the governor, we got to hear some fabulous speakers up there, so if you ever get a chance to go to that, please do. The swearing-in and organizational meeting, I thought, went very, very well. I think we had a great, great turnout for that, and I want to thank everybody for that, especially Holly Cassie and, and Caitlin McCluster, you did a fabulous job. And again, thank you to the citizens for trusting me from Chatham Blair's District for representing you, and I look forward to seeing you in the community. And, Ms. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Ingram?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. It is such an absolute honor to work with a group of men that have this county at the foremost front of their heart, that there's no agenda, there's no vendettas, no intentional backstabbing, and it's such a joy to be around this quality of men, and I'm very grateful for that. And we had a great meeting today, and I look forward to eleven more for this year, and I just am very appreciative of that, so thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I'd like to echo some of the remarks. I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight, all your comments, people speaking. I want to thank the staff for everything they have done, and we've been here a long time today. I would like to thank the board, working good together today, and I'm looking forward for a good year. And with that, Mr. Terrell?
I guess so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Terrell.
Mr. Dudley wanted to add something else?
Um, I, I meant to say this earlier, and I do apologize for that. I want to welcome the new board members, and let's just make you a part that we can gel together and work together. Mr. Whittle, because you didn't say anything tonight, I'm going to make a motion, you give a ten-minute speech next month, just because you didn't...
I can't work on that.
But I do, I want to welcome the new members, and I really appreciate your dedication. It's not easy serving, I can promise you. Thank you, Mr. Dalton, I apologize.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dudley? Mr. Terrell, you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Real quickly, we had an excellent organizational meeting to start January. We had, I think, a very informative and productive budget meeting today, and we're building a dynamic to move forward with, on solid ground with the new budget and make an impact on this community for you. Stay warm out there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Hunt, you have any comments, sir?
Let's go home.
Sounds good.